On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Spokane area, welcome to our 2021 Primary Lexing Candidate Forum featuring candidates for Spokane City Council, District One, Position Two. City Council District One is the northeast portion of the city, generally north of I-90 and east of Division. All voters within the boundaries of Spokane City Council District One will select two of these candidates to advance to the general election. I am Lisa Kuhar, your moderator, and Mike Bell of the League is the timer. Election Day for the 2021 election, the primary election, is Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. Ballots will be mailed to all registered voters about three weeks before Election Day and must be postmarked or deposited in conveniently located ballot boxes no later than 8:00 PM on Election Day. You can register to vote by mail or online by July 26, 2021, or in person on Election Day at the Spokane County Elections Office, 1033 West Gardner Avenue, or at Center Place, 2426 North Discovery Place, Spokane Valley. For other questions about casting your ballot or information about the candidates, contact the Spokane County Elections Office at 509-477-2320, or visit their website, spokanecounty.org/elections, or in the League of Women Voters Online Voters Guide, Vote 411, at vote411.org. I will be asking the candidates questions that have been formulated by the League's Voter Services Committee and will ask as many questions as the time allows. Before the questions begin, the candidates will have up to 30 seconds to introduce themselves and tell the voters why they are running. They will have up to one minute to answer each question with additional time for rebuttal or follow-up question as appropriate. And each candidate will have the opportunity for a 30-second closing statement. The first speaker will alternate with each question. And now we meet the candidates for Spokane City Council District One, Position Two. The candidates are Jonathan Bingo, Luke Jasmine, and Neftmanna Sharazi. Starting with you, candidate Bingo, you'll have 30 seconds to tell us why you're running for Spokane City Council.
All righty, well, first off, I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us to come in here and have this forum. I really appreciate it. A little about me, I'm born and raised in Spokane. I went to Rogers High School. My wife and I have a little one-year-old boy named Samuel. And we run a couple of businesses here in town. One is in events and entertainment, and one is a construction business. And I'm running for city council because I would just like to see a little bit of common sense brought back to local politics.
Well, thank you, candidate Bingo. Now we turn to you, candidate Jasmine. Why are you running for city council?
Hi, so I echo Jonathan and thanking the League of Women Voters for inviting us to this conversation. I'm Luke Jasmine, and I'm running because literally everything I do is community-focused. Me and my team were able to help open and manage five businesses and nonprofits led by people of color and women. Here, we've worked with Dave Black and Four Degrees Real Estate to provide access to childcare and services for children. I'm on the police ombudsman, I'm on many groups and organizations helping to make Spokane better, and that's what I want to do.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. And finally, candidate Sharazi.
Thank you.
Why are you running for city council? Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Neftmanna Sharazi, and I'm running to be the next council member from District One. I'm running because people in my district are hurting, and we need a champion on council. As I knock on doors and speak to people who are behind on their utilities, businesses that are struggling to survive, folks generally feel the city council is not listening to us. We have over 60 miles of unpaved roads. We are in a housing crisis right now, and we desperately need someone who can advocate for us. As a renter, as an immigrant, I will be the voice for these peoples. I look forward to tonight's forum and thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me.
Thank you, candidate Sharazi. We'll begin our questions now with candidate Jasmine. Question one. Children of the Sun Trail paralleling the new north-south corridor is in the process of being built with state highway funds. Additional projects connecting to that trail that would enhance its use have been identified by community groups, though these have not been funded. How should the city facilitate the additional projects?
Yeah, so we talked about communities like Minnehaha and also Hilliard that have been separated by the train tracks for a long time. I want to see us being able to collaborate with the neighborhood councils. And as far as how do we get funds there, we need to talk to the Washington Department of Transportation and make sure that there are the necessary investments along the highway that's going in for the community. We need to support the northeast PDA that's right near there. Make sure that there's mixed-income housing there to really help with business, really help with a flourishing neighborhood. And like you heard from others, infrastructure. We need more money for roads and streets in that area, and those are the things that I will look to do. I've been spending a lot of time in Olympia and federally advocating for dollars for the east side of our state, and that's what I plan to do if elected on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Same question to you, candidate Sharazi.
Could you please repeat?
I certainly shall. Children of the Sun Trail paralleling the new north Spokane corridor is in the process of being built with state highway funds. Additional projects connecting to the trail that would enhance its use have been identified by community groups, though these have not been funded. How should the city facilitate these additional projects?
We have so much opportunity going on right now with the sustainability plan that's coming through for our, you know, greener Spokane area and for the sustainability of the city. There are a lot of funds available on the local level for the parks and things, and we can invest. We can ask for those monies to be spent on that, some of the monies on that. And as Luke said, you know, we have been advocating in Olympia for years for dollars to be brought back. The city council holds the purse strings, you know, we can ask the city council, and we can go beyond that. There is a lot of investment and a lot of federal money that is coming our way that we can use to not just sustain our communities, but also to build the infrastructure, which is what is needed. You know, we do need the affordable housing, definitely, but we do need the green spaces, and we do need the ability to be able to do the sustainable, properly sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Sharazi. Candidate Bingo, same question. The children of the Sun Trail paralleling the new north-south Spokane corridor is in the process of being built with state highway funds. Additional projects connecting to that trail would enhance its use and have been identified by community groups, so these have not been funded. How should the city facilitate these additional projects?
Can I have a clarifying question on that? What you mean by those additional projects? Is there something to go along with that, or is it just additional projects, just in general?
Yes, in general, this would be an additional project that doesn't have a funding line, so.
So it's not necessarily a road, it could be a park, it could be something else like that, but it's not necessarily just by. Okay. Well, along those lines, if it is anything that has to do with roads, what we need to make sure that we're doing is local government really exists for two main purposes. Those are infrastructure and public safety. When it comes to infrastructure, we need to make sure that when we're spending our dollars, we are hyper-focused on whatever our plans and our goals are. And if our goal is to build and create these new spaces, then we need to make sure that the dollars aren't going off to other projects that aren't helping us to accomplish our goals, which are to develop in the northeast. In the northeast, we do have a really unique opportunity to see some funds reinvested into that area if we focus on developing the northeast PDA. Seventy-five percent of all the increased tax revenue that comes from new taxes created in the PDA, which is located directly on top of a federal opportunity zone, all of that is directly reinvested into that area, which will help us to make sure that we have the proper funding for all of these projects that would help to enhance the area. The PDA is what's going to help us get that money.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. We'll now turn to question two, and candidate Sharazi, you will answer first, please. How would you address the public safety concerns many people have about the concentration of homeless people in or near downtown?
Um. We have to do this collaboratively. The city needs to support no barrier shelters and housing. We also need more long-term efforts to work to get to people into homes quicker. We need more shelters and higher capacity at those shelters. Every year, we chase the weather. It sucks that we don't have plans and measures in place proactively. We need warming centers in the winter and cooling center areas during heatwaves. I have lived here for 10 years, and the situation is nowhere near to getting resolved. It's time to find a solution. With eviction moratoriums being lifted soon, I dread to think how huge a crisis we are headed towards. The city controls the purse strings. The budget is approved by the city. If we need finances to be allocated, we can use that, the limitation of funds, you know, we can use it as leverage to be able to make sure that we have these things in place, and we are ready for the weather.
Thank you, candidate Sharazi. Candidate Bingo, same question. How would you address the public safety concerns many people have about the concentrations of homeless people in or near downtown?
Yeah, well, I think that many, many bad policies were written with very good intentions. For the last 30 years, from a federal and state and city level, we've been focusing on housing first. And the problem is, is that we're treating a human issue as if it's a housing issue. When we talk about homelessness, you know, there's a few different categories. People who are temporarily homeless will not have a hard time finding help here in the city of Spokane when it comes to the chronically homeless, and this is typically what we're talking about. The chronically homeless are overwhelmingly either addicted or mentally ill. And what we're doing is we're pulling them off the streets, and we're just concentrating them in shelters and not actually addressing the brokenness on the inside of the individual that will help to rehab them and get them to their best self. My focus would be to focus on treatment-first programs to make sure that we are focused on the individual to help restore and heal the individual. That way, they can get back to being their best self as a productive and integral member of society.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. Candidate Jasmine, same question. How would you address the public safety concerns many people have about the concentration of homeless people in or near downtown?
Yeah, so, look, I want to say I do believe low-barrier housing, but I also agree with Mr. Bingo in the sense of we don't end homelessness without making sure that we're wrapping people with mental health services. We're working with our state legislators to make sure there's adequate treatment facilities. Because if we're looking to end homelessness, that's what we need to do. We need to move people to sustainability. And, look, I live right across from a homeless shelter. I operate businesses where we often interact with people suffering from homelessness, and have parents who are experiencing homelessness. And that's what we need to do, and that's what you would get from me, working not just with my city council members, but also region. Why, to make sure, yeah, housing, but we are moving people along, and that's really how we're going to end homelessness.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. I will comment that your audio broke up a little bit, so check your internet. Make sure you're good, please. We'll turn to question three, and we'll begin with candidate Bingo. Although homelessness is a big, tough problem, and the mayor is focused on increasing the number of beds in existing homeless shelters, homeless encampments are increasingly spreading to residential neighborhoods and other parts of the city. What can the city do about these? How would you encourage the city to prioritize the voting, the necessary city resources, to solving this problem at the neighborhood level?
Yeah, as we all know, homelessness is really a regional issue because Spokane is, you know, the big city on the east side of the state. And so many small towns don't have the services that we have here in Spokane. And Spokane is a very generous area, it's a very generous people who are willing to help those who are down on their luck, who need a little bit of help. But, at the same time, what is unacceptable is to choose to live a life where you are constantly receiving from others without giving anything back to society. What we see from the chronically homeless population is addiction and mental illness. And a lot of times, what comes with the addiction and mental illness is disregard for other people in the community, disregard for their property, disregard their safety, disregard for, you know, the chronically homeless person's own safety. And so what needs to happen is we need to find a way to get them off the streets, get them into their right minds, get them into a position to where they can be well and be their best self.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. I'll turn to your candidate Jasmine, same question. Although homelessness is a big, tough problem, and the mayor is focused on increasing the number of beds in existing homeless shelters, homeless encampments are increasingly spreading to residential neighborhoods and other parts of the city. What can the city do about these? How would you encourage the city to prioritize the voting, the necessary city resources, to solving this problem at the neighborhood levels?
Yeah, so, like I said, I've spent many years in Olympia and also advocated on a national level. And, look, people over there, they see us as all the same, whether we're the Spokane city, whether we're the county or the valley. So what I'm saying with this is, we all need to work collectively about this. And just like Mr. Bingo said, we are the largest city in between Seattle and, I believe, Minnesota. So that means that naturally, people are going to come to Spokane. So what do we do about that? I say, let's figure out ways to work with the rural areas and be able to bring services out to there. Maybe there is some way that we can rotate services so that we can meet people where they're at, because that's really where we want them to be able to be and thrive. But we also have to remember, they are people. Our homeless population, they're people. As long as we treat them as people and give them pathways to sustainability, we will be able to solve this problem.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. And finally, candidate Sharazi, the same question. Although homelessness is a big, tough problem, the mayor is focused on increasing the number of beds in existing homeless shelters, homeless encampments are increasingly spreading to residential neighborhoods and other parts of the city. What can the city do about these? How would you encourage the city to prioritize the voting, the necessary city resources, to solving this problem at the neighborhood level?
So I am an immigrant. I don't have family or savings to fall back on. I am one of those people who actually lives one mispaid check from being on the street. So I know how hard it is to struggle, and I know how many people are struggling, especially in the northeast area in our district. And with that, we need to find appropriate places that offer proper services. The shelters that we have need to be put in a space where a person can walk down the street and actually go buy a dollar worth of a burger, and, you know, and mental health services. Everything related to like transportation and mobility and access, we have to think of this holistically. You can't just think about having so many beds, it's not going to solve the issue. We have to think about this holistically, and we have to think in terms of what services we are offering, how they're being offered, and when they're being offered, and how we can make sure that everybody has access to it.
Thank you, candidate Sharazi. We'll turn to question four. And we'll begin with candidate Jasmine. As housing prices rise, so does the cost of renting houses or apartments. What solutions would you favor to encourage more affordable housing in Spokane for people who have been priced out of the housing market?
Well, look, I'll make my answer very simple. It's all about supply and demand. Right now, we do not have enough supply. That's why you're seeing people spend $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 over asking price for homes right now. So we have an opportunity to be able to increase supply and preserve affordability of homes. I want to work with SNAP and the Realtors Association to create more equitable education opportunities around homeownership. I want to optimize our land use for affordable housing. Right now, the Washington Department of Transportation has land right in East Central that I would love to be able to work with the fellow council member who represents East Central to see how we can get that land to be able to get more affordable housing there. And again, there is the northeast public authority, northeast public authority, and we need to make sure that there's homes there as well. So we have opportunities to revitalize, and we have land. We just need to make sure we prioritize it.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Same question to you, candidate Sharazi. As housing prices rise, so does the cost of renting houses or apartments. What solutions would you favor to encourage more affordable housing in Spokane for people who have been priced out of the housing market?
So we need to declare a housing emergency, basically. For years now, the city has kicked the can on housing issues. Rezoning and upzoning to allow for denser housing and multifamily housing in certain areas of town is essential. The biggest example I give is, you know, North Town Mall, that whole area is single-family homes and housing with, you know, there's adequate livable space, there's parking. There's two, Nevada and Division, you know, we have bus services, transit services, everything is there. If we just upzone, this will increase the amount of housing stock available, and people can, you know, multifamily use and that kind of thing. So having housing stock available and decreasing the demand in turn, increasing affordable housing is what we need to do. We need to build affordable housing right away. You know, rents are rising, and if I get pushed to go out of the city, it will add to costs like gas, and it means we're getting further away from being a greener and sustainable city, and that's bad for our council as well, and as well as for Spokane.
Thank you, candidate Sharazi. Candidate Bingo, the same question. As housing prices rise, so does the cost of renting houses or apartments. What solutions would you favor to encourage more affordable housing in Spokane for people who have been priced out of the housing market?
Yeah, well, first, I would start by not voting down new developments. One of my big frustrations with the city council right now is every development is being turned down for one reason after another, no matter how silly it is. It could be a shadow on a park, it could be they didn't promise to only put one house here. And quite frankly, it's disrespectful to the community because what we do have right now is a housing emergency. We have a lot of people who are desperate for homes, desperate for a place to rent. I was sitting with an individual today, and they were crossing their fingers. They had an appointment tonight to deal a house, and they were just praying that they were going to be the one who was able to get that spot. With a 0.5% rental vacancy, we have no business voting down any developments right now. We will deal with the situations and the secondary concerns, and we'll get there. But we do need to increase the supply rapidly, and we need to do it now. We need to infill, we need to spread, we need to do everything to get whatever housing is necessary into the community. Now, I'm thankful that I've been endorsed by a lot of organizations that are intimately involved with developing and building in the city.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. Oh, candidates, we'll turn to question five, and we'll begin with candidate Sharazi. What are your suggestions for implementing the goals contained in the most recent revisions to the Spokane, City of Spokane Sustainability Action Plan as revised in 2019 by the state with requirements for renewable energy and greenhouse gas reduction?
So I'm very much behind that. I fully support any green and sustainable initiatives. We do want to maintain a circular economy eventually. Basically, we are on a good track, but the plan needs to be more ambitious and have short-term and long-term goals that make us a greener and more sustainable area. We need to have clean air and clean water for the safety and health of our community. We need to focus on affordable housing. People are moving out of Spokane to go live in Kootenay County, and will be driving to Spokane, but affects climate when people live out of Spokane. Home prices are skyrocketing, and that means I cannot buy a home here. Rents, too, are rising, and if, as I said, if I get pushed out to go live, say, in Kootenay County, I will be adding to costs like gas, and it means we're getting further away from being a green and sustainable city. So it's really important to, like, think in terms of long-term plans and short-term plans, and take it from there. We need to look at it more closely.
Thank you, candidate Sharazi. Candidate Bingo, same question. What are your suggestions for implementing the goals contained in the most recent revisions to the City of Spokane Sustainability Action Plan as revised in 2019 to include Washington State requirements for renewable energy and greenhouse gas reduction?
Yeah, well, you know, we all know that solar is the future of energy, and I think it's really encouraging to see some of the things that are coming along, and I would support any of that. I also think the Sustainable Action Plan is a very bad idea for Spokane. I don't know how you get more ambitious than no new commercial or multifamily homes receiving natural gas hookups by 2023. That's in a year and a half. New commercial buildings and multifamily homes, which we desperately need, cannot have commercial gas or can't have natural gas hookups to it. We just saw the Inland Earth article last year about how many people in our district were desperately behind. Seventy-five percent said they had no hope when it came to their utilities. If we're banning natural gas like we see in this plan, what's going to happen is we're going to see people in our district who are already without hope when it comes to their utilities seeing their utilities spike threefold. We cannot have that in my district.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. And candidate Jasmine, what are your suggestions for implementing the goals contained in the most recent revisions to the City of Spokane Sustainability Action Plan with the new Washington State requirements for renewable energy and greenhouse gas reduction?
Yeah, so I've been following the sustainability work group fairly closely, including talking to current city council officials, unions, VISTA, about the plan. We know that climate change is real. I like the city is moving to electric buses on the city line to curb greenhouse gas emissions, to help control temperature in buildings and promote better health. I believe it's important for the city to provide more tree canopy, especially in the northeast. I love the fact that the plan seeks to partner with organizations like ZONE and NAACP, among other organizations, to understand environmental justice issues impacting our community. What we could do right now is make sure we are conserving our water usage, which all individuals can do. Part of my sustainability transition goal is to protect the hard-working people and the jobs that may be affected by the transition so that they are still able to provide for themselves and the families. And all in all, I just plan to listen to the experts and make sure to do policy based off of what the experts suggest. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Question six, we'll go to you, candidate Bingo, first. The City of Spokane will be eligible for an additional $40 million from the federal government for COVID response. How would you propose this money be spent?
Yeah, well, we had a lot of businesses that were deemed unessential. We had a lot of workers that were deemed unessential. And with the additional $40 million that's coming in, that's not related to rental assistance and landlord assistance, which is its own separate thing, and we'll make sure that that money gets there. But when it comes to the additional $40 million that's coming into the City of Spokane, we need to make sure that we are identifying and being hyper-focused with those dollars to make sure that the businesses and the individuals who lost their jobs, who lost their businesses through no fault of their own are receiving the aid necessary to make sure that they are not missing out on their rent payments. They're not missing on their car payments, they're not missing on school supplies for their children. They're not missing out on being able to buy food. We need to make sure that those that were affected most receive that money. It's very important that we don't take $40 million, a one-time payment, and invest it into recurring programs. It needs to be hyper-focused, that we get it to the people it was intended to do, to help those in need.
Well, thank you, candidate Bingo. Candidate Jasmine, same question. The City of Spokane will be eligible for an additional $40 million from the federal government for COVID response. How would you propose this money be spent?
I also agree that we need to prioritize our small businesses, which are the lifeblood of Spokane and the northeast. They've been doing everything possible to stay open and serve our communities, and we owe it to them to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place. And for me, I want to promote jobs, especially for people in the northeast, people of color, women who during COVID had to leave the workforce in insane amount of numbers. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that there is accessible and affordable childcare, which is something that I'm working on right now with Spokane Public Schools, the Department of Commerce, and other city officials and groups. Number two, almost every home I talk to talks about the streets. So right now, we have a plan for two streets per district per year. I want to expand on that. And the third thing is internet access. I don't know if many people know, but right now, you can go to Comcast, and if you are eligible, you can get internet for as cheap as $10 a month. We need to expand that. So those are the things that I think we need to do and prioritize with the funds.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Candidate Sharazi, same question. The City of Spokane will be eligible for an additional $40 million from federal government for COVID response. How would you propose this money be spent?
Exactly the way that both of my other opponents have described. We really need to focus whatever the money that needs to be spent on making sure that health and human services is maintained. And then after that, the first thing we need to do is we need to be thinking about investments in areas that have not received attention particularly in District One. You know, we have this North Town Freeway coming, and the Hilliard and northeast Spokane area have been under-invested for years, and we need to make sure our roads and infrastructure are up to par with the rest of the city. Northeast PDA needs to be properly supported, and once the freeway is finished, the industrial area in northeast Spokane will grow. It will mushroom hugely. So the first thing we need to do is to pave the 61 miles of unpaved roads and streets that exist today in our district. And once that happens, then we can be ready to be able to attract even more businesses. More businesses means we have more livelihood, means more people come in there, and they thrive, and their families thrive, and they have enough money to be able to do what they need to do.
Thank you, candidate Sharazi. Interesting, we'll segue into the next question, which is about road maintenance for residential neighborhoods, and we'll begin with candidate Jasmine. How should the city prioritize and find the money for improved road maintenance in residential neighborhoods?
Yeah, so quite simply, we have the best opportunity right now. We have funds coming nationally. We have funds coming through the state, which typically we don't. And like you've heard from the others on this call right now, the northeast hasn't been prioritized. Prior to COVID, we were. the Northeast hasn't been prioritized prior to COVID and we were forgotten. So we need to make sure that, uh, we get our, our fair share of, uh, infrastructure, road infrastructure. And like we, like all of us have been mentioning, we have the Northeast PDA. We have the, uh, North South Freeway coming in. And, uh, and, and we have an area that's now, it, it is zoned for industrial. How do we bring those jobs into the Northeast? By investing in the infrastructure, the streets, the transportation. And I plan to do that by just doing just that, advocating on the state and, and for federal dollars to make sure that we get our fair share finally for the Northeast.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Candidate Shirazi, you get to expand upon your comments. Um, how should the city prioritize and find the money for improved road maintenance for residential neighborhoods?
Thank you. Uh, well, currently we do have a couple of policies in place which bring a certain amount of revenue. But here's, here's the crux of the matter. I, as I said, I'm an immigrant. I moved to Spokane ten years ago. I lived here ten years. And all this time I've never seen, despite the fact that District One is the largest generator of sales tax for the entire city of Spokane, I never see any funds coming back into our district to make things happen here. We really need desperately to find different solutions and more viable solutions so that we can actually get stuff done, uh, done in our area. Roads and streets, well, the, certain, the streets fall under the city, uh, under, under the city. And the, the roads fall into the county. And so we need to work collaboratively and not worry about the thaw and freeze every year and maybe just be a little bit more proactive on that. But money-wise, I feel we generate enough sales tax for, for us to be able to see some development coming back. We, District One needs some love.
Thank you, candidate Shirazi. Candidate Bingo, same question. Um, how should the city prioritize and find money for improved road maintenance in residential neighborhoods?
Yeah, uh, like I said in my, in one of my earlier answers, when it comes to priorities, there are two basic priorities local government has. One of them being infrastructure, which is roads. We need to make sure that the roads are well paved and make sure that, uh, they're all paved. Uh, in the, in the Northeast, we have a, a high amount of unpaved roads and we need to make sure we're making that happen. When it comes to, uh, how we fund them, what we have is we have an opportunity, if we continue to develop the business in our area, what we can see is we can see an increase in sales tax. We can see an increase in property tax and all of that is reinvested directly into our, into our area. And we need to make sure that as we're developing those areas, we're getting that money and we're getting it to, uh, to put specifically towards roads. Uh, we do have a problem with, with thawing and, um, and freezing and that makes it to where our roads get, uh, messed up. But we are coming to the end of our bond session with the Jim West bonds in twenty thirty, uh, that money is going to fall off. And if we're smart about it as a city, those remain mainly for arterials. If we're smart about it with our money, we can find a way to actually take care of residential streets as well.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. Um, so question eight will be first, a candidate Shirazi. What is the best way to fund and prioritize better code enforcement for such issues? And not exclusively these issues as abandoned vehicles and motorhomes increasingly found in neighborhoods throughout the city?
We just have all these different levies and things. We should be able to prioritize again. Where are these funds being used originally? We should bring it back. Every neighborhood has a different plan. We all have our sustainability funds. We, we need to put together a plan of action for the city to be able to come across, uh, to prioritize and, and figure out how we're going to manage this.
Thank you, candidate Shirazi. Candidate Bingo, same question. What is the best way to fund and prioritize better code enforcement for such issues as abandoned vehicles and motorhomes increasingly found in neighborhoods throughout the city?
Again, there is, there is no greater, uh, responsibility for the city than infrastructure and public safety. Uh, if we're not prioritizing those dollars, I don't know what we're doing. One of my big frustrations with the city council right now is that it looks as if, uh, my estimation is that we're focused on more national issues as opposed to local issues. My focus is going to be that we're, we're staying in our lane. We're staying in the positions where we can be the most effective, uh, to help the people in our city. Uh, right now we are desperately underfunded when it comes to our, our police department. So when it comes to, uh, public safety, we need to make sure that the police have the proper funding. Right now we're about a hundred officers short. Uh, Washington State is fiftieth out of fifty when it comes to police per capita. We are desperately low when it comes to our police department. And that means that a lot of, uh, small tiki-tack crimes like, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, property crimes oftentimes go, um, go unsettled. Uh, you know, oftentimes the police aren't able to get there until the, you know, sometimes the next day. We need to make sure that our police are fully funded to where we can actually be enforcing codes.
Uh, thank you, candidate Bingo. Candidate Jasmine, same question. What is the best way to fund and prioritize better code enforcement for such issues as the abandoned vehicles and motorhomes increasingly found in neighborhoods throughout the city?
Well, we need to get to the root. So I have a privilege of being able to serve on the police ombudsman. And, uh, I also have the pleasure of being able to work with Tommy Williams, who runs a criminal justice program, uh, through our, our community school, uh, here in, in the Northeast. And, uh, the skill center, I mean, and he's growing our, our, uh, law enforcement, our future law enforcement. And, uh, when I knock on doors, what I hear from the residents is they would love to be able to know law enforcement by first name basis. They would love to be able to see them off foot, uh, riding around on bikes. Uh, if weather permitting, and that's what we need to do. And I believe we do that by making sure we grow, uh, police from our communities that look like our communities so that we can tackle issues like the, what you're mentioning. But also I want to get to the root of why do we see those? And I would say it's because it's a lack of jobs. So if we're working on infrastructure, if we're working on roads, internet access and access to jobs, we will see, in my opinion, uh, less of, of the issues that you're talking about.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Our final question tonight, we'll start with the candidate Bingo. How does the, how does Spokane Police Response Time compare with other Washington cities our size?
You know, honestly, I'm, I'm not sure what the, uh, what the response time is in comparison to other cities. But what I do know is that we can respond faster if we have the proper funding for the police. As I just said in my, in my last answer, we're a hundred officers below where we should be according to, um, our, our police chief. And I'm glad to have been endorsed by many on the command staff. I'm glad to have been endorsed by our sheriff here because they know that I'm the guy who's going to be able to bring the necessary mentality to, to bolster our public safety departments, uh, including the police. Until we find ourselves in a position where we don't have to prioritize calls, uh, you know, and as I've been out on, um, I went on a ride along and you see they have multiple calls coming in and they have to prioritize based on severity. Um, until we have the proper police force to where we no longer have to prioritize and we have the ability to respond quickly, uh, to all these, all these calls, we're going to find ourselves in a position where we're not able to respond quickly enough because we just don't have the, the proper staffing in, in that position. And as somebody who also likes to listen to experts, as I'm listening to the experts in law enforcement, I think we should do exactly what they say and follow their, their instructions when it comes to. This is how we can be most effective in the community.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. Candidate, uh, Jasmine, same question. How does Spokane pu- police response time compare with other Washington cities our size?
Yeah, so look, i- i- it's, I was talking to Chief Mydall just last week and it's, it's no secret that we, uh, don't have, uh, the adequate supply of police. What I want to see is what I was mentioning before is us growing, uh, law enforcement that look like and are from our communities because they will be the best ones, uh, to respond to issues. And the other thing that I think a lot of us agree on is making sure that are the right people going to the right calls. And even talking to Chief Mydall, he talked about, uh, partnering with, uh, Frontier Behavioral Health and saying, you know what, maybe we might have some health, uh, and, and behavioral, uh, specialist going to, to calls as opposed to, um, uh, police officers. And I think we can do that if we're prioritizing who is, uh, responding to calls. But all in all, let's just make sure that we're working together and solving these issues. We need to listen to each other. We need to listen to the experts. But we also need to listen to the residents. And that's what I plan to, uh, mag- uh, uh, elevate if elected.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Candidate Shirazi, same question. How does Spokane Police Response Time compare with other Washington cities, uh, our size?
So I do know that we, it takes, when I'm knocking on doors and talking to people, people are telling me that police do not respond in time and I am not a hundred percent sure. Well, I do know this, that we are the third deadliest police force in the nation. And so I know that we need more police accountability and oversight. We need voter, the word is wanted and we need it. We have the, the third deadliest police force in the nation. This needs to be addressed through reforms, uh, through de-escalation efforts and more mental health experts incorporated into each appropriate call as needed. I would say we have worked hard towards getting smart justice and the, the Spokane Community Courts and everybody involved the way that we have been into providing so many, uh, more services. And as we grow our force, which we will definitely do, um, I, I think that that can happen for the benefit of the entire community. But agreed, we need to be, uh, represented, you know, appropriately on amongst the court.
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Shirazi. That concludes our questions and now we'll turn to your closing statement. You'll each have up to thirty seconds. And candidate Jasmine, you'll begin, please.
Yeah, look, so one thing about me is I'm in the community right now. I'm doing the work right now, whether it's around housing, whether it's around infrastructure or it's around safety. And, uh, I know, uh, my opponent talked about all of his endorsements. We, I've been endorsed by a lot of experts as well and, and from both sides of the aisle. Why? Because they know I get things done. I will listen, I'll work hard and I'll get things done. So please visit jasmineforspoken.com and please help out, support.
Thank you, candidate Jasmine. Candidate Shirazi, your closing comments.
Thank you, uh, to everyone who's listening in and the League for this opportunity. I know there are a lot of issues folks care about. And if you don't touch on something tonight, I would encourage everyone listening to this to please reach out to me on five zero nine three eight zero nine two seven zero. I am running to be a city council member who will listen to the community. So please call me or my campaign so we can hear from you. We need a council that reflects on our communities and by, uh, electing me, we got closer to that. Renters in our community don't currently have a voice in council and we need one. Since the start of the pandemic, we have lost thirty percent of small businesses. And when I'm on council, they won't be able to ignore District One any longer.
Thank you, candidate Shirazi. Candidate Bingo, your closing comments, please.
Well, once again, thank you, League of Women Voters for having us. I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and to, and to share, uh, what I'm wanting to bring to the community. Uh, you know, I, I'm running for city council because again, what we need on city council is somebody who is level-headed, who, uh, bases his decisions in reason, understands the data, understands what the experts are saying, understands the entire community and is able to act and bring the proper responses, bring the proper votes, bring the proper voice for District One. And I believe that I'm that guy. Check out JonathanBingo.com. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you, candidate Bingo. Thank you, all the candidates. This concludes our two thousand twenty-one primary election candidate forum featuring candidates for Spokane City Council, District One, Position Two. Candidates are Jonathan Bingo, Luke Jasmine and Nagmana Shirazi. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, thank you to our candidates for participating in this forum. We hope this has given you the voters information that will help you make an informed decision when marking your ballots by election date, Tuesday, August third, two thousand twenty-one. For more information, please visit our website, L W V Spokane dot org or our online voter's guide, vote four one one at vote four one one dot org. Again, thank you, candidates, and good luck.